All right, let's go ahead and get started then. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for the Apex Town Council, February 19th, 2019. And if you would, please join me in a moment of silence as we thank those around us who have sacrificed for us, those who give us our freedoms and our blessings. And we'll do that with a small moment of silence here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm very happy to be here tonight. I was under the weather this past weekend, but coming out of it, so if I seem like I'm a little low-energy, I'm okay, just gonna manage through. I'm glad everybody came, though, and we do have a couple of new things on the agenda for tonight we'll talk about in just a minute. Briefly, I do see a few folks out here. I think we have sign-in sheets for the public forum, so if you have not yet signed in, please sign in on the public forum. There are also some public hearings. Yeah, if you have not signed in, go ahead and sign your name. And we have a couple of public, let's see, a couple of public hearing items here, so make sure you choose the sheet that you intend to speak on, so that we don't end up having to cross your name out and move it to the appropriate list later. The clerk will be picking those up in just a couple of minutes, so now's your chance to put your name down. Since there are no presentations tonight, we'll move into consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that are generally considered to be non-controversial. As we consider them, we typically will pass them in a single motion. And if any council member wishes, however, to pull a single item and talk about it later tonight, they certainly can do so. At this time, I'll call for a possible motion for approving the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, I'll take that as a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion for consent? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, consent passes. At this time, we'll set our agenda for the evening. We have a printed agenda that everybody hopefully got a chance to get a copy of out on the podium outside. I understand there are a couple of new items, so I'd like to turn the floor over to Council Member Killingsworth, so she can mention the item or items that she wishes to include.
Sure. There are, there is one new business item for a possible motion to approve a resolution declaring February African-American and Black History Month in Apex. And then the second one is a possible motion to enact a local act to impose and collect transportation development or facility fees.
Okay. And for the, for those, do we have anything pre-printed?
We do. In fact, they should be.
Okay, let's make sure all the council members have those. Is that the cover sheet drop-in here? Oh, there's two. Right, okay. Does everybody have those? All right, great. All right, so if it please, the council will refer to the Black History Month as new business number one, and the local acts, new business number two. Any other items? Is there, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
What should approve with the two new business items?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second discussion. All right, all in favor of approving the agenda with these two items added, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the agenda is set for the evening. That takes us now into public forum. Public forum is a time where you, as citizens of Apex, get to talk to the council. We listen while you tell us what's on your mind. It could be happy, it could be sad, it could be whatever you bring to the table. I will now refer to the sign-in sheet that I have and call the folks in front of me. And I normally say there's a yellow sheet, but we'll just go right into it. There's a three-minute time limit for you. Rosanna Stewart, you're up first, followed by Debbie Hamm. And Ms. Stewart, mark that you're representing four more people who are here tonight. Can we identify who they are?
I don't know if they all came, but my cousin Penny came.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, so you've got some family here?
Yeah, some family here.
All right. Please proceed and just, you can see the green, yellow, red lights there. Those are on the little box.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not gonna be that long.
Good.
Just wanted to basically let you know that our family, we have a history here. We're Tuscarawas, Native American. We've never left this area. Our family was instrumental in friendship getting its name. The powwow that was presented for all of the different cultures to live together in peace and harmony was part of my family. My two times-great-grandfather Tommy Stewart was instrumental in that, in having that being done. So I'm happy to see the recognition for, for the Black History Month, and I'm hoping that this will open the door for Native Americans who are first people, indigenous people, who have been forgotten, to one day be able to stand tall and be considered as people who've led a very important part in making North Carolina what it is, especially this part of the area. Our family has always recognized the differences of people and chose to live in harmony. Our family goes back for generations. The Tuscarawas have been here for 2,000 years before they, before they were forcibly moved out in the 1600s. We lost everything. Our family, the blood of our ancestors, is in this land, and I want people to know that. And I think it's time that North Carolina, you know, we have representatives here that should give credit to the Native Americans, because this was our land. Before there wasn't, before there was the United States, we owned it. When the first settlers stepped down on Plymouth Rock, that was our rock. So I just want people to know that, and I'm happy to see the changes is here. And my ancestors today would be very proud of anything that anybody wants to do. They became the change they wanted the world to see, and I'm hoping that each of you will also consider making a change in letting our people stand tall once and for all.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you very much.
All right, and Debbie Hamm?
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of those in Apex who are living with multiple sclerosis. We are planning our fourth walk for this Friday, February 22nd, where we have a group of individuals walking 22 miles through the town of Apex all the way to Holly Springs. We've worked with local business owners to gain sponsorships for the rest stops, which are every four miles, and 100% of the proceeds from the walk and the auction that we host at the end goes to the National MS Society. Just to give you all a little background about multiple sclerosis as a disease, it's a neurological disease that affects the brain, spinal cord, and optical nerves that affect your eyesight. Other variations of the symptoms, because it's different from person to person, would be numbness, tingling, loss of eyesight, trouble with hearing, bladder issues, cognitive issues, tremors, seizures, hearing loss, speech problems, and severe pain, just to name a few. To give you an idea, they used to believe that, the MS Society believed that there was about 400,000 people in the United States with MS, but that number was just reevaluated in 2018, and there are close to a million people in the United States living with MS. Over 16,000 people in the state of North Carolina, over 2,200 in Wake County alone. And to my surprise, the town of Apex, I know it's grown a lot in the last few years, but we have over 150 residents that are registered with the National MS Society. That does not include the people who have not yet come forward to share that they have this disease. I have some guests behind me with their loved ones. I'm honored to have them here to represent people in our town that live with this disease. Sandy is not here with us tonight, but she's lived with MS for over 35 years, and that was before medications were made available and MRIs were available, so just CAT scans and steroids. She is extremely grateful for the research and the funding that has gone in to help have over, well, close to 20 medications now available to us. We have Mike, who is an awesome advocate for the town of Apex, working diligently with the mayor and the council to have better accessibility for those who are in wheelchairs. We have Ashley, who was diagnosed at the young age of 19. There are many cases throughout the United States of children with multiple sclerosis, and Ashley has used her voice very proudly to represent for these kids and to share what the process has been like for her. We have Kim, who has been diagnosed a few years as well and is excited to finally be able to start a family with the help of, in support of her husband Kyle, who is studying medicine. We have Danielle, a dear friend of ours, who passed away five years ago this week after her 20-year struggle with multiple sclerosis. She raised her two children here. They both graduated from Apex High School, and they are both very excited about the 22-mile walk and the way that we honor their mother. MS takes away the connections in our bodies. The whole meaning of this walk and what we do is to get those connections and keep us all connected, and raising awareness and raising money, so that everyone feels included and hopefully coming to a cure someday soon.
Hang on one second. Can we, can we just turn off the timer? I want to let Ms. Hamm finish.
I'm pretty much done. I just wanted to say that having it here in Apex allows a true testament of community, so we really appreciate the support.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Hamm.
Yeah.
And just as a reminder to everyone, we did get this signed ready, so I'm gonna be bringing this on the 22nd at 3:00 to scratch.
To scratch, good.
To meet you guys. But this encourages anyone to either sign up to walk or participate by donating and sponsoring the walker, and that we're encouraging people to learn about multiple sclerosis, including pronunciation, which is why MS is commonly used as a shorthand, nothing wrong with that, and that we encourage all, all people to realize it affects people around us that we may not be aware of, and to, to treat them with the kindness that they need.
Thank you. We started with 12 walkers this year. We have over 40, and we have representation on our team of over eight people with MS, and those walking for people in Virginia and Michigan and Florida, so it's growing.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think this is a key part to say, this is something that you've done in Apex now for how many years?
This will be our fourth year.
Your fourth, right.
And every year, we raise over $10,000.
Right.
And we have a Facebook page, and all the participants are asked to raise $222. It's not a requirement, and there's no registration to walk.
Wonderful. All right, thank you, Ms. Hamm.
Thank you.
All right, and that concludes our public forum for today, so we'll now move into public hearings. Public hearing number one, is a possible motion on rezoning, number 18CZ30, and it looks like Sarah Rayfield is presenting tonight. Ms. Rayfield?
May, Council? I'm not usually going first. All right, presenting case, rezoning case 18CZ30, located at 7808 and 7824 Stevenson Road. Just to locate you to the vicinity within Apex, we're looking over here, in this area here. And to bring you in closer to the site, these are the subject parcels 7808 and 7824 Stevenson Road, a total of 4.12 acres. This is brought to us by Cozy Homes LLC. The property is currently zoned, rural residential. The proposed zoning is medium-density residential, conditional zoning. That is consistent with the 2030 land use map shown here, excuse me, shown here, and then also consistent with the 2045 land use map as well. Bring you back into here. So neighboring uses and zoning, we have single-family residential pretty much surrounding the site, Colvin Park here to the south, town of Cary over here to the east, and the Lily Orchard subdivision. The properties to be rezoned are currently vacant and wooded. The applicant conducted neighborhood meetings on September 24th and November 20th, 2018. Those neighborhood meeting reports are attached in your staff report. And I should also point out, I gave you guys a fresh copy of the staff report, as the applicant provided us with two new zoning conditions yesterday afternoon, so I've printed you a new copy of the staff report. You'll find those incorporated in there, paper clipped to the back. You will also find, just a printout sheet, of all of the zoning conditions. The two new ones are at the end, and I will get to those momentarily. The proposed zoning conditions, everything is included in your staff report. The permitted uses are single-family homes, greenway, and accessory apartment. Most of the conditions, there's a total of 16, most of them are standard, architectural standards for residential development. I will point out those other ones. And the first is that developer shall provide a minimum frontage widening based on one half of a three-lane thoroughfare section with sidewalk and public right-of-way dedication based on an 80-foot right-of-way along Stevenson Road. So that would apply to here. Second is the developer shall provide public right-of-way dedication based on a 160-foot diameter for future roadway design of a roundabout at the intersection of Smith Road and Stevenson Road. So essentially, the right-of-way reservation would be in this area here. And then the other new ones that we received, number 15, that all homes shall be preconfigured with conduit for a solar energy system. And number 16, a solar PV system with a minimum capacity of 3 kilowatts shall be installed on at least one home in a development with up to 14 dwelling units, or on at least two homes in a development with 15 or more dwelling units. All solar installation required by this condition shall be completed or under construction prior to 90% of the building permits being issued for this development. Planning staff recommends approval of 18CZ30 with the conditions as offered by the applicant. The planning board heard this item at its February 11th, 2019, meeting and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the rezoning with the conditions, at this time, it was only 1 through 14, as proposed by the applicant. I'll be happy to, and the rezoning is reasonable because it is consistent with the 2030 land use map for medium-density residential uses and is consistent with the development in the area. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here, should you have any questions.
All right, questions for staff?
I had a couple. One was regarding the roundabout right-of-way. So that's, that's in the plan, the 2045 plan is a roundabout there. Does it require each of the corners to do the same thing for it to be built, this roundabout, or, like, because I know one side's on Cary's property, I think, so does it require all this coordination, and is that gonna be a tough make happen in the future?
I don't think that it would, would be tough to coordinate. Essentially, it's just that the right-of-way reservation is based on a diameter from where the, where center line to center line, intersection would be, I presume. Shannon would be able to give us the details on that. I don't think that, you know, that it's that far into it, it's just that that would be what the reservation would be required.
Okay. And we got an email today, kind of late-breaking one, about just concerns about it being kind of wetlands. Can you remind me the rules about wetlands versus streams and where people can build houses?
They can, it would depend on if it's the type of stream that it is. That would be a question more for stormwater, Department of Forests specifics and re-
Okay. Are there any streams on this property?
I'm not aware of any on there that I recall.
Just the utilities in the middle there?
Gas line, yeah, I think that's what.
We should probably, to follow up what Brett said, we probably should contact Cary to let them know what we want to do there. I expect that's probably already been done.
I presume, I don't, yeah, I can-
It should be done.
Yeah.
We coordinated with all of our surrounding jurisdictions during the advance Apex process, and Cary attended the meeting, so-
And there were no objections to making roundabouts on edges of town?
No. No. Anything that they, any of the jurisdictions pointed out, we took a look at and changed if we needed to, but there was not any discussion of this roundabout, so they obviously don't have an issue with it.
Okay, and theoretically, if that other corner develops, they will for sure require that to be right-of-way on their side as well?
We coordinate with Cary on all of our jurisdiction boundaries, because we have to, for even just lane edge for turn lanes and things, so it's, yeah, it will be, if there's something that comes in, in that location for development, they will get the necessary right-of-way.
Okay.
So my understanding, too, from that email, is there's concerns about traffic out there as well, so are we looking at, where are we looking at possibly putting an entrance to this?
The entrance would be determined during residential subdivision plan, but most likely, it would probably line up here with the existing access at Lily Orchard Way.
Are we concerned about sightline there?
I know it was discussed in the pre-App, and I, so I know it's something that will be addressed, if they haven't already looked at it, but essentially, I think what would be talked about is this would be what would make the most sense.
And are we also looking at a turning lane there?
There's not a traffic study that's been required at this point in time, if there was something that would be required at the time of subdivision plan.
I believe Stevenson is a three-lane road in the plan, right?
Correct. Yes, in the, in the advanced Apex. It's an 80-foot right-of-way, three-lane thoroughfare.
Okay, yeah. I had that same question, and I think hopefully the plan will, you know, be sufficient.
Is that the north-south road, is that Smith Road?
Yes.
Is that part of the improvement to 1010, or is that not included in the improvement to 1010?
Only the intersection.
Only the intersection.
Oh, Smith and 1010, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? All right, I'll call the applicant up. Mr. Neil Gosh?
Mayor, all of members of the town council?
Good to see you. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we got nine minutes for the applicant. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney with the Morningstar Law Group at 421 Fayetteville, Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I'm here tonight representing Cozy Homes for this rezoning. I think it is fairly straightforward rezoning. It's consistent with your comprehensive plan and other policies contained in the plan, including the future land use map. There were some questions up here about access, so I wanted to touch on some of those things. Our understanding is that basically access is gonna be required across from, directly opposing Lily Orchard Way, based off the transportation standards, so that's the expectation there. If there is a sightline issue, then we're, we have to get a driveway permit for wherever we're cutting the driveway, so it'll be consistent with the sightline requirements as well. But the expectation is that our entrance will line up directly opposing Lily Orchard. And to that point, because of the planned roundabout in this location, there will not be an access north towards Stevenson Road. So really, the only point of access to this property would be the driveway, which at this time is planned here, and that would be the only point of access to it. I did want to take a little time to introduce you to Cozy Homes, because I know they haven't done much work, well, they haven't done any work in Apex, and they're kind of new to the development scene, but Cozy Homes is a small developer, local developer. They have a project going in the city of Raleigh right now, it's called The Oasis. It's about 31 or 33 lots, 33 lots, single-family subdivision. And kind of the point I'm trying to highlight is that what Cozy Homes is doing is, they found a niche in the development market by investing in these often overlooked, smaller pieces of land that have been, a long time, have been unproductive, and they're finding a way to make them work both financially for them, and obviously as, as a productive piece of property for the town. As you know, Apex is growing, the Triangle area is growing, doesn't seem to be stopping anytime soon, so there is almost an infinite demand for housing. So, you know, it's, it's nice to see small infill development projects like this possible. Your typical home builder that you normally see at these meetings is looking at projects that are much larger than this. Something like this would not even tip the scale for them. This project in particular has some challenges. Obviously, there's a road widening. It's only a four-acre parcel, four-acre assemblage, I should say, so with the road widening and the roundabout, some of that is cut off, but there's also, and you can see very prominently, a utility easement that bisects the property, which further disrupts the ability to develop this parcel. Our initial yield studies show that we're gonna be less than 20 homes on this site, so, I mean, on a six-acre, I'm sorry, on a four-acre site, this zoning generally would allow for 24 homes, but we're not gonna be able to approach those kind of numbers on this site, based off some of the constraints here. In fact, I think we're looking 15 or south. But, you know, to be, to be transparent, the plan would be to put as many homes as we can fit on there within the rungs of the UDO. We're not asking for any exceptions to any UDO standards. This would be an MD zoning, so it would be subject to all of your standard regulations in the UDO for that zone. And if you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay.
Do they build single-family detached? Is that what they build?
Yeah, yes. That's what would be going on this site, and that's what they're building in Raleigh, although I know they are exploring townhome projects in Raleigh.
So, given the email that we did receive late today, and just some of the concerns and that were brought out today, so thank you, Mr. Gant, wanted to ensure that, you said that you would build as many as you could, probably under 20, so I would hope that you would think about not building as many as you could, but that as many as you could, but also preserving trees and the natural area, and considering some of the stormwater issues that were raised here, so my hope is that you would consider that and not be, do as much as you could, but as much as makes sense.
Right, that, yeah, and they would be building as much as they could under the terms of the UDO. They're not seeking any variances or modifications or exceptions to UDO standards. At a, at under, well, at 24 units, there wouldn't have been a traffic study required, but we're gonna be way under that. We'll be at like 15. I mean, this is, this is not that many homes. So the traffic expected to be produced from this project is negligible. Not, not to say that there isn't a traffic concern in this area, that's why there is a roundabout being planned, but this is only 15 homes, or around 15 homes, I should say. And then obviously, they will be meeting the stormwater standards, and I believe they're preserving about 20% of the space for open space.
Any other questions for Mr. Gosh? All right, thank you, Mr. Gosh.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Seeing that no one has signed up, I'll close the public hearing. Of course, you signed up, but you spoke already. Close the public hearing, and at this time, refer the matter to council for discussion leading to a possible motion.
I have one question for Sarah that I wanted to ask earlier, but decided to wait. Based on this, is there a guarantee of a certain number of stub outs to either the south or to the west in order to ensure future connectivity and reduce the number of connections onto Stevenson?
We would evaluate and look for stub outs to neighboring parcels during master subdivision plan review. The number of those and where they would be would be something that would be determined at that time.
Is zero possible?
Um.
Because I would hope not.
No, I think we've, I think we've made-
Okay. I mean, my, obviously, my, my preference would be if there are residents in Colvin Park that wish to visit their neighbors, they don't have to go out onto Stevenson to get there, you know? So that's, that's my question from a, from a rezoning standpoint. You look like you may know the answer already, Mr. Gosh.
Yeah, sure. From the, from the measurement standpoint, one would be required to the south, and one would be required to the west.
Okay.
There, there really is not an opportunity to the north with the roundabout coming in here.
Yeah, I'm not interested in that. I'm mostly, it's interested in interior connectivity to other future parcels, so that we can maximize connectivity off the Bane Road.
Is there a slide that shows maybe a better view of the parcels? Like, okay, yeah.
Do that.
Sure. So these parcels here are not currently part of Colvin Park.
Sure.
And when they develop, there would be a stub.
Exactly.
I couldn't tell you where, but-
Right. And that's my whole point, is I want to make sure there's connectivity options, and I wanted to make sure that the rezoning, or else our ordinance, would require them, so that we don't end up with one big cul-de-sac in this little pie, not connected to anything.
Right. No, it would be required by the UDO, so there'd be one stub to the west and one to the south.
Okay. All right. Do you concur?
We do concur. Now, you know, you did mention the connectivity into Colvin Park, but there's parcels in between-
That's why I was saying it.
Right, the parcels that would be in between-
Sure.
Right, because this isn't directly adjacent.
I understand, I understand.
Right. But, but yes, essentially, it would, the goal would be to set that up-
All right, thank you.
-in the future, sure.
I don't have any further comments or questions, if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, with the conditions went through. I'll make a motion to approve with conditions one through 14.
Okay.
16.
16. One through 16.
All set. All right, and a second from Councilman Jensen. All right, discussion on the motion for approval with the conditions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing some Cozy Homes in Apex. Yeah, thank you. All right, well, now move to public hearing number two. This is a question of annexation, number 649, at the 55 bypass and East Williams Street. Ms. Diane Kim?
Good evening. So to orient you to the general vicinity, it is located in our south area near 540 SC-55 bypass and East Williams Street. This property, there's actually four parcels, including these two strips, the former Technology Drive right-of-way, and then the main part of the property that have already been recombined have already received rezoning and site plan approval for a gas station to be located here. They are requesting annexation so they can get their construction plan approval. The larger part was actually annexed back in 1989 as part of a 350-acre tract that continues over into the Veridia area. Technology Drive used to come across here to connect to Old 55. And so that part, that piece was actually annexed at the same time as most of East Williams Street, all the way up into town back when, in 2003, when we were trying to connect some areas from the south up to the main part of town. And so these two individual strips were not annexed with the others, because those were done well before this development was even considered. They need to annex these two strips so that the entirety of the project area is annexed. Staff does recommend approval.
All right, questions for Diane?
So you're saying that those are just kind of, so the road was in between those two, and those were kind of leftovers?
Leftovers, yep.
Okay. So I guess we don't annex these leftover kind of weird things unless people ask, right?
We can't.
We can't, okay.
Annex them without having the property owner petition.
Petition, okay. Because I'm guessing there's all, these are all over Apex, these kind of things?
Uh, yes. I'm not sure that it shows, what does show here. There's two more strips from the former Technology Drive that if this piece ever develops, will need to get picked up and annexed as well.
That happened when the bypass got built.
Yes.
Used to be that was the way into, well, I called it Data General, because that's where I used to work way back in the day. But now it was leftover when they realigned the road.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Diane. And this is coming from the applicant. Is the applicant here?
Probably not. We don't usually ask them to come.
That's fine. I just wanted to check in case they wanted to say something. All right, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Seeing that no one has signed up, I will close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion on the motion for approval. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We go to public hearing number three. These are some ordinance changes or potential various amendments to the UDO. And Amanda Buntz presenting.
Good evening. So the First Amendment is to the supplemental standards for townhouses detached in order to remove an architectural standard that's no longer permitted by the state law change a few years ago. This one got missed when we've removed others over time, and so we're just striking the standard. Any questions on that change? Okay, simple enough. The next amendment is to the section regulating accessory apartments in order to update the standards related to size and building materials, remove the one-bedroom restriction, and add missing references to the MORR zoning district. So an accessory apartment, just to refresh your memory, is either attached to a principal dwelling, detached from it, or above within a commercial building. And one of the First Amendments is simply to strike some basically duplicate wording within this section. And then there's some reformatting to the section where it's clarifying that there's no limit to the size of an accessory apartment when it's attached to the dwelling. Essentially, it looks all like the same building as far as the size of the house, or as far as the main house. And so when it's attached, there's no limit to the square footage. The standards for when the accessory apartment is detached remains unchanged with regard to size. What is changing is the formatting, and we're removing the restriction that there be no more than one bedroom. There's some indication that state law does not permit this, and so we're removing that standard out. And then we're clarifying or striking some language in the similar materials section to propose that the construction of the accessory dwelling maintain the materials consistent with the primary dwelling and not allow it to be consistent with another accessory structure on the property, which could be of lesser quality. And then the only other changes are to add the missing reference to the MORR district in a couple of sections. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So am I interpreting these all as clarifications for the most part and not really making it more or less flexible to build these type of units?
So the primary change is to remove the one-bedroom restriction. That is the most substantial change.
That will make it more flexible, I guess.
That will make it more flexible. Keeping in mind that with the detached structure, your size is still limited. The accessory dwelling, when it's detached, has to be smaller or no greater than 1,000 square feet, smaller than the principal dwelling or no greater than 1,000 square feet.
Why are those two different for whether it's in the small-town character district or not?
So oftentimes, homes within the small-town character district can be smaller than those outside, so that's why, let me look at it again, give me just a second. So we wanted to ensure that in the small-town character overlay district, these detached units were not dominating the rear yard. And so that's why it's 50% of the heated square footage of the principal dwelling unit or 1,000 square feet, whichever is smaller. And it's just to keep those more in character with the pattern of development that exist Sorry, any questions on that? Any other questions? And then the last one is very simple. We're simply updating a website reference that was not updated at the time that DEQ, the department name, was changed to that, and then clarifying the name of a department at the DEQ. And staff's recommending approval. Planning board unanimously recommended approval at their February 11 meeting.
Is it the policy to have actual websites in our UDO? Isn't it easier to say the website for this, like, kind of describe it more than put the link, so this doesn't happen?
Possibly, except there are so many specific documents. I guess in this case, we could reference the name of that publication until the DEQ changes the name of that publication as well. It's probably six in one half dozen the other of what's best.
Do we go through every once in a while and kind of just check each of the links?
This may be, actually be the only website reference in the entire UDO. If anything, there's less than three if there's more.
Okay.
So fortunately, we don't have that many to keep up with.
In terms, back just one little step, in terms of the square footage, you said that the auxiliary structure can't be more than 50% in area of the primary structure.
Or 1,000...
Or 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, or 1,000 square feet, whichever is smaller. And that's within the small-town character district.
Okay.
And that's if it's detached.
That's if it's detached, right.
How did we come up with 50%?
That was actually an amendment. It used to just be 1,000 square feet, and folks were concerned that there are quite a few houses in downtown that are 1,200 square feet or 1,400 square feet, and they didn't want a second full unit on the lot. They wanted it to be truly accessory. So that was added in.
I understand. I just was curious about the selection of 50% versus 60% or...
This section was part of the small-town character study that was done back in the 2000s. And so it was, there was a committee and month-long study, months-long study. And so it's just what people felt comfortable with at the time. We're not proposing to change that standard.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just wanted to get a feel for the whys. Thank you, and you've done that.
Have there been, have there been some of these built in the small-town character overlay district?
There have been.
There have been? Okay.
Oftentimes, they're above detached garages.
All right, thanks. We'll go to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and no one has signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion in a couple of seconds. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously, and that concludes our public hearing for tonight. There's no old business, there's no unfinished business. We now move to new business number one. I turn the floor over to Councilmember Killingsworth.
Thank you, Mayor. So in reaching out to the community, Nicole and I have collaborated on this and received some pretty valuable insight into Apex and the history that surrounds us. To leave out the acknowledgement of the black community that has such a rich history within the town of Apex would be an injustice. One of the first churches to be built in Apex was a black church, the Christian Home United Church of Christ. One of the first buildings built downtown at 119 Salem Street was built by a black man, Mr. C.W. Williams. He was the first African-American to own property in downtown Apex. He first had a general store there, and then he leased it to Holland Drug Store. He built it, he owned it, and was the landlord, but he couldn't walk in the front door because he was black. A recent historian for African-American history within Apex puts forth that the most successful family business in Apex was the Baldwin family, who were African-American. They were also arguably the most generous family in Apex. Several African-American men started businesses before the incorporation of the town, including two shoe shops by Willis Fuller and Sam Markham, and George Renter ran a blacksmith shop. Thomas Yates ran a shoe and blacksmith shop. Throughout most of Apex's history, and indeed Western Wake County, at least half the population was African-American. This only began to change around 1980. Schools only desegregated around 1970 here. At that time, there were 323 black students and 299 white students at Apex High School. That was before busing began to happen, sending some of these students to Cary High School. The communities of Wops, Low End, Scotts Grove, Frog Town, Matthews, Feltonville, and Friendship have a long enduring history in Apex, and it shouldn't be lost. So, I'm going to go ahead.
So a resolution declaring February African-American Black History Month in Apex. Whereas Black History Month is an annual observance in Canada, the Republic of Ireland, the Netherlands, the United Kingdom, and the United States of America. And whereas historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded Black History Week in America in 1926 during the week of the birthdays of President Abraham Lincoln and former slave and abolitionist Frederick Douglass. And whereas North Carolina was one of the first states to observe Black History Week in its schools. And whereas during the bicentennial celebration in 1976, President Gerald Ford urged Americans to seize the opportunity, quote, seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout history, extending the week into a month. And whereas since 1976, every American president has officially designated February as Black History Month. And whereas Governor Roy Cooper has declared February Black History Month in the state of North Carolina. And...
Whereas Apex encompassing the community of friendship has a rich history of American Indian indigenous people, specifically Tuscarora tribe, and during the age of Jim Crow, their Pow Wow brought together their white and black neighbors who agreed to reject Jim Crow and embrace peace and friendship. And whereas in the spirit and strength of the friendship, Wops, Low End, Frog Town, Matthews, Feltonville, and Scotts Grove communities, Black History Month affords the whole community an opportunity to become more knowledgeable, in particular, of the contributions of black people to the physical and cultural progress and history of our country, state, and town. And whereas such insight can strengthen the knowledge of all of our citizens regarding human rights and progress made toward breaking down barriers and building relationships, oneness, and a strong sense of community. And whereas, as Americans, together we can achieve the ultimate goal of equity and inclusion while rejecting any form of inequality and discrimination. And whereas valuing all people and respecting their experiences, we strive to understand and empathize with the struggles of our neighbors and celebrate our differences resulting in a better functioning community, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s beloved community. And now therefore, let it be resolved that the town of Apex, North Carolina declares the month of February 2019 as Black History Month and urges all citizens to come together in our onward march toward dignity, justice, and equality for all.
All right, I'll take that as a motion in a second, if that's all right with you two. All right, discussion on the motion for adoption. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And we go to new business number two. Again, I'll turn this back over to Councilmember Killingsworth.
So I recently had a discussion with one of our representatives, and she encouraged us to put forth a resolution approving our intention to ask the General Assembly to enact a local act in order to charge transportation development fees. So that's pretty much what this is, and it is to basically direct the town attorney and manager to work with legislative staff to draft a local act in our favor.
Great. And as I understand, our town manager has awareness of this. If it's all right, I'd like to see if he has anything he wants to add to this. Okay. All right, so with...
The resolution's on the back, the flip side of that.
Oh. Look at you, saving paper. I was just going to say, there's the resolution. Okay. So I'll just read this into the record. Whereas the town of Apex is experiencing rapid and continued growth within the Apex Town Limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction, and whereas the continued growth is causing ongoing and significant need for new and additional transportation improvements, and whereas the town desires a local act of North Carolina General Assembly to enable the town to lawfully impose and collect fees on new construction within the Town Limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction to finance such transportation improvements. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Apex Town Council of Town of Apex hereby requests North Carolina General Assembly to enact a local act authorizing Town of Apex to impose these fees as described. So if that's all right, I'll take Councilmember Killingsworth bringing this as a motion for adoption. Is there a second?
There's a second.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
Can I ask maybe the town manager? So other municipalities have this kind of local extra ability. And does the way it manifests itself in those places that they, like, so we have developments and they can do road improvements, where they influence the roads. So do these often happen on top of those, or is it instead of them doing it, the town kind of holistically does it? How's it normally work in some places?
It's in addition to.
Okay. And it would fund typically road improvements in the vicinity, but not necessarily what's kind of touching the developments?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It would enable us to, to be able to alleviate some of our frustrations, knowing that a development that's about to be built is going to create demand on a nearby street or intersection, but yet not having, currently not having enough ability to do anything about it unless we collect tax money from all of City of Apex citizens to pay for that improvement. And this gives us, in my assessment, a little more ability to do sort of a pay-as-you-grow. You want to be part of Apex, you want to have some homes here, you know, your impact, try to help cover it locally, right? The cost should be covered locally. The cost should be covered locally by the people who are creating the impact. That's kind of the idea. And with the local act going to the General Assembly, it supersedes a general act by giving locale as a specificity. So Cary, for example, has something similar. And there are, there is a committee at the General Assembly that deals with local acts. So as things get reviewed in the committee, we want to make sure they have the ability to have something to look at so that they have the best chance that they can to get something through there.
Okay. And do the state, is there a kind of guidelines about how much to charge with that, or is it kind of allowing us to do that and then we would kind of base it on...
There would have to be a, there would have to be a study done to determine the rational nexus for the collection of the fee. So it's, it's not something that once we have the legislation, you know, we'll come the next month and say, here's the fee.
Yeah.
We'll need to work with a consultant to determine that. We'll take a similar path that, that our neighbor did.
And do they, is there a limit on where the funds that are generated, is there a limit on what type of roads may be improved, like state roads versus the local ones, or is it kind of just meant to be self-financing?
Not, not to my knowledge, and we've, we're hoped to word this fairly broadly to say transportation improvement. So it would cover roads, sidewalks, side paths.
Not only.
Yeah, not, not greenways because those are, we already have a source of funding for those through the recreation subdivision fees.
Okay.
And if there has to be any representation to be present, obviously, since I am there for my real job, I'm happy to do that if it works with my schedule.
Any further discussion? All for, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right. That passes five zero, and I think that takes us to the end of our open business items. Thank you all for sticking around and hanging out with us. We've enjoyed your presence. We now go to our closed session items, and there's nothing following that. We now need a motion to go into closed session to meet with the town attorney to discuss the matter of upright builders versus Town of Apex.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right. We're now going into closed session. Thank you all for coming out tonight.